Nope.
Nope, yeah. Good morning. For those who weren't here earlier, we have the pleasure of having Judge Harper swear our new district attorney in Donna David. So with that, I'm officially calling the meeting to order. Supervisor Groves is out on county business, so I will be driving the ship today. Supervisor Finley, will you lead us in pledge of allegiance?
My pleasure. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to public comment, this time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on the agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda.
Hello. My name's Walter Wood. Me and my neighbors were notified that today would be our planning and zoning meeting hearing, that apparently, I'm looking at the schedule, it is on for August 21st. So, I mean, just go two hours, apparently, the wrong day. But, yeah, we've all got letters. I talked to my neighbors yesterday and the day before, and they were all talking about that, oh, your appearance coming up on. So, just want to say there's some, something went on there.
Was it, you said it was a planning matter?
Yes, yeah, it looks like it was the planning and zoning file P-17-46.
Was that anything to do with citations or anything?
No, no, it was a rezone for us that we could put a small Ben breakfast.
Got it.
Yep.
Well, it passed.
Awesome.
So, thank you for showing up. Is it in front of us?
Hi, Kate Groves from Lewiston. I actually have two separate topics. One of them is about the Trinity County Collaborative. The collaborative was pitched to the board back in October 2012, and it was pretty vague in general and not really set up. They were going to supposedly run it and form it around what the stakeholders were wanting. The collaborative's been several years since then, and it was really big. A lot of people participated, there was a lot of diversity, there was a lot of different groups and interests, and it all petered out because it didn't go anywhere. Because basically, what it, in my mind, was always supposed to be, was money for RCD, Haverford Watershed Center. Since they both rely on grants, it was basically, in my opinion, a permanent hoop set up for them so they could get grant money. And that's what they've been doing. And almost all the work has gone to them. And I would like the board supervisors, because the board supervisors, they didn't ordain it, they don't run it, they're just, attend the meetings, basically. That's how it was set up. I would like the board to take a more active role in this, because we have an opportunity here now that we have new Forest Service personnel, and we have BLM personnel that might be willing to do this, to take a more active role in expanding what the collaborative was, people thought it was supposed to be. And not just make it a money trail for RCD and Haverford Watershed Center. We have small businesses that could do logging, et cetera, and we could expand it and include that and actually turn it into something that really functions like what they have on Six Rivers. My second topic is, I'm bringing up your resolution from 2009. It's 2009-08, or 058. It's a resolution of board supervisors of Trinity County asserting legal standing and formally requesting coordination with all federal and state agencies maintaining jurisdiction over lands and/or resources located in Trinity County. I would like you to use this and contact the Forest Service and BLM and the other land managers in regards to our fires that we had and the timber in Trinity County, which was burned, and to help the Forest Service harvest and manage it, because the Forest Service has constraints on them that the county does not. And it's completely within your jurisdiction and your obligation to do this, because we're going to have huge swaths of dead snacks that'll just be above hotels somewhere. And you guys have the authority to do this, and you can step up and help the Forest Service. We have a registered Forest Service personnel in Weaverville. I'm sure he would love to hear from you if he said as much. And you guys could use your authority to do this, and you already have it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yep. Mike Weir, Haverford. Hi, guys. I've got a couple things here. I want to go back to two meetings ago when you guys voted to approve the minutes. There was a issue at hand, and County Council pointed out that the minutes are there for accuracy or close to accuracy. Well, there was a statement made that you guys voted on something, and I just want to play you just a little bit from that, because this is actually... Of course, now it's on your word. All right, well, basically, what it would have played, I don't know why it's on, but what it was going to play was, it would have played Keith turning down or saying after you guys came to vote, and John wasn't here for it. So, I'm not quite sure how he was able to make a motion on those minutes, when the question was about something while he wasn't here. And also, John was actually the person who was affected mostly by that particular motion, by that motion itself. So, if we're going to follow the Brown Act, let's follow the Brown Act, okay? If you refuse yourself from something, and then that's called into question, you need to refuse yourself also from that vote on that issue at that point, because the rest of the minutes weren't being disputed, only that one section, all right? And, you know, I make these tapes, and the reason I make these tapes is I pour over them, because you guys talk over each other all the time. You don't speak into your microphones, it's really hard to hear, it's really hard to tell what is being said by whom, when. So if you guys can speak one at a time, clearly into microphone, it really would add a lot of clarity to the mistakes or to the comments that are being made. And if we can have the County Council or the CIO, and I believe it's actually the CIO, it's John, to actually be calling shots here rather than County Council. I mean, if I remember correctly, when Wendy Tyler was here, everything went through Wendy Tyler. You know, all, any questions about process or bureaucracy or procedure, it all went through her, and then if she had a question, then she asked County Council. You know, and I believe that's the proper procedure, which needs to be handled, if you're going to actually follow Brown Act and follow the way things are supposed to be done. And that brings me to the last thing. I don't believe you guys really need a lesson in it. I thought it was a pretty insulting thing for County Council to infer that you guys need another class in the Brown Act. I mean, it seems to be more like, are we going to work by that? Is that what we're going to, it be our rule of government? Or is it not? Because if it's not, and if it's just going to be haphazard, you're going to have chaos, and anything goes. I've seen that happen here. You know, it seems like anything goes. You know, whatever seems to be the mode at that time should be approved. So, take your free time.
Anybody else?
Good morning, my name is Carrie Abels. I live here in Weaverville, moving my loud heart. I have a concern with the project that's coming up here in the county. It's the proposed East Connector Possession Bridge that's going to cross the East Weaver, East Weaver. Is anyone familiar with this project? What it is, is I live right next door, the project is going to happen, they've already been out there core drilling, they've got bridge engineers looking at it. Well, my concern is, it's nightlife, it's on the, what is the bridge, the road, the Levy Road, is what is, all night long, there's nightlife out there. People that have different sleeping hours than me. And just a couple nights ago, my neighbor had a conflict with them, because they were hanging out there by her fence, and they're telling her to calm her dogs down at 2:30 in the morning. So she has a conflict with them to tell them to get away from their gate. So, if this bridge goes in, I'm just worried it's going to tie this nightlife into Park Avenue, which is the park, and just, it's just, I just don't think it's cost-effective. And if you guys look into it and maybe reevaluate this thing, that was, the date, farthest back I could find this proposed was 1998. So, you know, things have changed since 1998. So if you can maybe reevaluate this project and really see how effective it is, I would appreciate it, so.
Thank you, Carrie, I'll follow up with you offline, I'll get staff as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Terry Nagel. John Finley, I'm here to retract something I said to you. I don't retract the fact that you did spit on my wife's face in a meeting that was two supervisors, two department heads, a CIO. You decided to yell at me across her face, and projecting that yelling thing that you had to do or felt you had to do. You know, she feels the pressure of your voice, your sound waves, and like anyone else is wondering, was there some spit with it? I came to you as early as December, and you've made no moves. I said, I'd like to take care of it inside the walls of something, because after all, that's where it happened, inside the walls at the fairgrounds in your office there. So, what I want to retract is that I will take care of it inside the walls, because you have no movement. You're ignoring this, and I don't know why, probably will never know why. I can guess, but I have multiple things I can guess, so they can't all be right. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else before we move on to our presentation? Okay. So, item 1.1, receive a presentation from Kelly Gant with the Chamber of Commerce regarding the Chamber of Commerce. Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning, good morning supervisors and staff. This morning's presentation is just a kind of a little update on where the chamber is, the county chamber is right now. I'm the new president for four months, so. So, we have a lot going right now. We're kind of implemented what we're calling the Chamber of Commerce 2.0. It's about time that we kind of look at maybe reforming ourselves, remodeling, restructuring, you know, just take a pause and think what we're doing and what we can do better. So, there we go. So, currently, we have this, the chamber does marketing and it does member support. So we now have two different corporations. We have the Chamber of Commerce, which is a 501(c)(6), and then we have a new corporation, which is the Trinity County Visitors and Development Bureau, and that's a 501(c)(3). And we developed that one so we could go out for grants to help with marketing the county in any development promotional stuff that we want to do. So we have two, and this is very common for chambers to have, a nonprofit entity, because the 501(c)(6) is, it's really hard to get grants for those, because those are considered business clubs, and it's really hard to get grants off the other ones. So, we're going to be splitting the tasks that we do. We're going to leave member services on the Chamber of Commerce side, and we're going to move all of the marketing activity to the Visitors and Development Bureau. Right now, the thought is, the chamber gets the money through all its sources and moves some of that to, or gives some of that to the Visitors Bureau, the nonprofit. So this is what we're thinking of doing, this is kind of a draft, we're still working with members, we're working with the board. So, on the left, the Chamber of Commerce is to just encourage Trinity County business, a healthy business community, and promote civic and business progress. And on the other side, we have your typical marketing that you have. We're also going to focus on the marketing side on two things, visitor recruitment, getting people here, and then marketing the visitor experience. New marketing now is all experience, whether it's people from Japan or people from the East Coast, everybody is into the experience. So, we need to kind of refocus on that. And you'll notice on the recruitment side, more online, Airbnb has experience posting now, we're going to look at bloggers, we're going to try to refresh our websites, and really look at activities that will bring people to Trinity. And on the other side, for the business people, we need to look at all our members, whether it's a vet, or a tire store, or a lodging member. We need to have a better relationship with our members, we need to give them useful support that benefits them, and be an advocate for them, work on our branding, and then of course, work on civic improvement. One of the things I've noticed when I've gone around to a lot of counties and I ask people, why do you join the chamber? And they just shrug their shoulders and go, because that's what you do. I'd like someday, when we go to Trinity businesses and I say, why do you join the chamber? They can give me a list, because we are a benefit to them. So, in the Trinity, or the Chamber 2.0 process, we're kind of going through this planning. The first one is sustainability. This is my, let's get real step. We are all volunteer chamber, I believe we're the only one in the state that's all volunteer. Most of them have, at least have one paid staff person. We need to figure out how we can have a stable revenue model, we need to adapt to the new economy that is in Trinity County, and the new customers coming to Trinity. And we also have to look at our capacity. The chamber is actually run by four volunteers, and then we have three part-time people who show up at the visitor center. So that's the whole capacity of running the chamber, and we can't do it all. So we need to kind of look at that. So that's the good, get real, how are we going to do this stage? Next is the financial funding. We get about $10,000 in dues that come in from our membership, and then we are getting around $20,021 from TOT. So, our budget's like $32,000 for everything. And we have some that goes into the visitor center, some that goes into marketing, and some that just keep the lives on pay insurance and all that kind of stuff. So, we're also going to bring all the bookkeeping in-house, we're, the reports we're getting aren't good, we're going to bring it in-house, use QuickBooks and be able to generate reports. We're going to do end-of-year audits, we're going to tighten the budget up and really track per category how the money's being spent, so that we are very transparent to our members and how we're spending our dues. Next, we're kind of doing that financial part right now. Guiding principles, we're going to redo our bylaws, make sure they're up to date to state law, we're going to create a policy manual, because some questions have come up, and we need to have policies on those. And then we need to have a real professional image. So, we're going to do that, and one of the top requests that everybody has is, we need a paid person to run the organization. Somebody where all the phone calls go to, they take the heat, they're the people, the person who is going to be the head of the organization. Maybe that's a combo hybrid, part-time, paid, volunteer person, we're not sure, but that is one of the top priorities. Moving into planning, we need to kind of regroup, we need, I've been told that we do 1950's marketing in the era of cell phones and tablets. I've been talking to a lot of millennials, asking how they do their vacation planning. We have some millennials who own businesses in Trinity County right now. They have a completely different view of the world than the Chamber has right now, and the old way of doing things. So, we're going to look at that, we're going to do chamber versus Visitors Bureau, we're going to prioritize some of the stuff that we do, given the money constraints that we have. And we really need to get creative, you know, how to do more with less. And online is probably going to be where we're going to have, we'll go, because Google Maps is free, there's a lot of free advertising out there we can do. Next, we're going to have to work together with other organizations in the county. In talking to organizations, we have a lot of great stuff that's going on in the county, but we're all doing it independently. And we're finding out we're crisscrossing, and we're all kind of doing the same thing, we're, here's the goal, and we're all coming at it like five different ways. So we need to work together with other organizations, like for us, the museum, the Arts Council Better, the county. What can we do to leverage the efforts you're making? One of the things I'd like to do with the county is say, what kind of incentives can we give our business owners to upgrade their facilities? You know, to modernize, because one of the complaints I get is, we don't have the type of housing, not housing, but the lodging that most people who are tourists now like. So, how can we incentivize the lodging owners to upgrade their facilities? So that would be something we'll talk to the county about. And then, we really need to get better, and this is something every organization has to do, is you have to monitor. If you put an ad in the paper, if you run, if we go with some bloggers, how do we track that that money is actually getting results? You put an ad in the San Francisco Chronicle, how do you know that those people actually see it? Because those can be expensive ads. So we'll do that, then we'll go back to, let's get real again, and then just keep working through that cycle over and over. So that's kind of what we're looking at, working on. It's not going to be an overnight thing, it's going to take some time, thinking, talking to members, this is kind of what we're working on right now. So one of the big things on the tourism side is, I personally, and I don't know if you guys are that way, but I am tired of going to Sacramento and to the Bay Area. And people say, oh, where do you live? And I say, Trinity County, and you get an absolute blank stare. And it's about the size of Delaware, kind of Northern California, what if on the Oregon border? Really? They don't even know where Trinity Lake is. So this is one of our biggest problems we have in our tourism. So, of the stages of marketing, the first thing you need to do is attract people. And we have three groups. We have people who are familiar with Trinity, I call these the Eustace, I used to come to Trinity, I used to hide Trinity, you know, I used to drive a buckhorn. All the Eustace people, we need to, those are the low-hanging fruit. We don't have to convince them that Trinity's nice, we just need to get them back. Then we have international and out-of-state travelers, this we can work with, the Shasta Cascade Wonderland, I'm on board with, one of the board members, and we can work and tag onto their programs. And then we have regional travelers. We're going to say, because there are a lot of people in Sacramento and the Bay Area that we need to get up here. So that top part, that attraction, is, needs to be our main focus, brand awareness. I want to go to Sacramento, people go, yep, I've heard of Trinity County. And then we do lead generation. The middle part is nurturing, so once people go, oh, there is a Trinity County, and they start going online and looking up things about Trinity County, then you're kind of nurturing them. You're kind of building the idea that maybe they want to come up here. There's a point in nurturing then that goes down to our members. It has to be the businesses. They need to be, have a presence, they need to have a Facebook page, they need to have a website, they need to have that next level of nurturing. And through that, then you convert that visitor to actually show up in Trinity. So this is kind of the typical model you have for market, for marketing and for the businesses. So, right now, we need to attract people, we need to get people to even think about nuclear and Trinity County. So whether it's backpackers, or mountain bikers, or art enthusiasts, or the Asian community who loves the Jaws House, we need to get them out there at least to think of us. So that's kind of what we're thinking about for that. So, in this refinement of what the chamber does, and that, let's get real, we only have volunteers, we only can do so much, let's only do what we can do well, and not do things like haphazard and just stretch ourselves too thin, there's going to be some winners and some losers. So we'll have our core services, we'll have member services, and we'll have visitor attraction. That's what the core of a Visitors Bureau and a chamber is. Unfortunately, the things that are going to get left to the side is some of the services we have for community and member services. We may not be able to do the copying and faxing we do for our members anymore. We may not be able to do ticket sales for the Performing Arts Center, which they've done. We may not have a person there to do disaster information dissemination, which happened in the Atlanta fire, we had some of that when we were, with the car fires going on. And on the other side of that, if we decide, for example, maybe we're going to contract and we're going to go all digital, and we're not going to have a physical presence anymore, then we lose the whole face-to-face engagement. We will miss the walk-in visitor support, we won't have that physical presence, we won't have, what do you think of for a typical chamber? So, where that line is, how much we drop off the ends, that's where in the beginning of discussions with. So, we have a meeting with the members and the directors next Thursday, and we're going to talk about the budget, and we have our program areas, we have the visitor center, and the member support, community service, and I can't remember the fourth one. But we're going to talk to them and say, okay, this is how much money each one of these programs is taking, how do you want that spent? And we're going to take that information, and then the board will probably come back in October, and they will vote on the budget. So, that's kind of where we're going, and we definitely appreciate the TOT money that's allocated to us. It would be nice if you see it in your budgeting that you come up with next week, if we could get a little bit more and maybe pay for that hired person. The chamber used to have a hired staff person at $30,000 a year in the old days. But of course, TOT was a little bit more in the old days. So, that's one of our top priorities, so that's my ask to you, in that if there might be a little bit more TOT for that full-time person, to kind of board this and get it going. So, that's all I have, are there any questions?
That's all.
Yes.
Yeah, well, actually, it's a question. I liked everything you said, actually.
Thank you.
I think a lot of it, I think the only question is, is targeting the correct who is coming, okay? Because you discussed millennials, which I'm not, and I'm clueless and I'm computer challenged in the largest sense, but I do realize that everybody, and all the younger people are, like John, are very computer, you know.
Yeah.
Able, they're able. I think that, like, actually, I had a gentleman that spoke earlier today, that he wasn't here for something that happened at the last meeting, but he's actually the new and upcoming business of Trinity County, I believe, but I think that he's part of it, actually. And I think that understanding that and understanding the change, because we're in the middle of major change. I think discussing that, I think that's just the only question, is who the target group is, and doing what you want to do here to them.
So the target group and the people that we take opinions from right now are our members. So we have, at last count, I think we have 89 members, which is actually a small part of the business community. I drive around and see people who aren't members of the chamber. That could be part of our problem. I mean, what benefit? If you're going to spend $85 a year and give it to the chamber, what do you get for it? So that's part of what we have to do, is we have some benefit. And then, and then the members vote. I mean, that's why we're having our member, our meeting next Thursday. So if, if we get a whole bunch of lodging owners show up, and not a lot of tire stores show up, then we're going to do the lodging owner stuff. So I think this is where the members all have to get together, and we just need to be a stronger business community. So, we're just going to take the input from our members that show up on Thursday as input.
Try and excuse my ignorance, but is the, is the county of Trinity a member of the Chamber of Commerce?
No.
Well, we could at least have a plot.
Yeah, so I just went through, one of the things we did is, we did a little Facebook post for every one of our members that rejoined. Those are still running, six a day, they'll be done like them, like next Thursday. But no, the town, I went through all of them in the chamber, not one.
Some of them might be our CIO.
Well, look at my willingness. We will be.
I think I was just volunteered.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a quick request, I know your marketing budget is limited, and I know this is not news to you, our cap- Our county businesses have really taken quite a few hits over a few years, whether it's construction of Buckhorn, or the Road Out, rest of us, the Road to the Lake, fires, smoke, while the rest of the country kind of had a recovery from the recession. I think all these elements have hurt our business, it shows in my district, for sure, with some of the empty retail establishments. So if you could, maybe perhaps in your marketing strategy, is have a portion of the money to be able to be a little flexible or nimble when issues arise, so you can remind people, you know, hey, the fire is out, Labor Day weekend is a great time to come to either lake, Lake Trinity, Lake, just to be able to adapt to the changing environments quickly, even if it's just reminding, you know, the surrounding counties that they could come visit here, whether it's an art cruise, or boating on the lake. So something to, because we're going to probably see more fires. I know when the Helena fire broke out, they, people said, oh, we thought all Trinity County was on fire. So I know North Lake got hit by that in terms of a downturn in business. So just want to pass that observation along.
So we did do a post, we did an open for business post just before Labor Day weekend on the Visit Trinity Facebook page. Problem is, we haven't nurtured that Facebook page well. We have 400 followers, we need thousands of followers. So that's going to take a little bit of time, and then that will, we can disseminate information that way. And you're right about the hit the county is going to take. So our TOT, we get the chamber lags about two years, I believe it's about. So we'll get the 20 this year, because you've got, because you promised to continue the contract. We then have a contract negotiation go through the county to bring this forward. But if it kind of works, we might hit 20-ish the next year, but this year will hit in 2001. So that one, we're only figuring we're going to get 14,000. So we figure we're going to have a $6,000 hit because of this summer. So we always have these kind of ups and downs, and that's the revenue stability that we need to figure out. And one of the things we're going to do is we're going to have a reserve fund. So when we have these dips in the bad years, we can do that. And I totally agree that we need people to know that, you know, it was open and, you know, the smoke did clear up, and I was, was going to mention too, I think one of the other problems we're having is, the tourists these days want these experiences. And unfortunately, cheap airline tickets to Europe are only like 600 bucks to get to Switzerland. And if you can spend $600 go to Switzerland and hike, or go to Trinity County and hike, a lot of the young people are going to Switzerland. People are into the experience. So we need to do really good at competing with that money. Maybe we won't get them every year, maybe we just once in a while would grab them, but we're going to have to have something really unique and cool to kind of combat these, it's so cheap to go and travel other where, other places and come back with bragging rights to your friends. So it's just the way all of tourism is changing, and, but that's, I think we need to look at that as a long-term play. But we need to get ready people up, we need to get met for people here, we need to work on the coast a little more, Sacramento, the nearby area where it's more logical, and I agree with you, we need to work on that.
And I would lastly say, don't overlook regional radio, it's not that expensive, and it can be usually deployed quickly and to adapt to something that's came up, so.
Yeah, public radio is something we should look into, you're right.
And just overall, regional radio, whether it's the coast or either Redding, which comes.
That's all I have. Anybody else? All right? Anybody else for members?
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. Yeah, so Mr. Nash. Do you? All right, so we will move on to consent. These items are routine, non-controversial matters, and will be acted by the board by one rule call motion. A member of the board of staff or public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Board members? Do you have any?
I will pull 2.3. Did I skip something? My apologies. Overlooked. We're going to back up a little bit. So we're going to go to 1.3, present, thank you Supervisor Chandler, present the 2018 Annual Employee Safety Award to Administrative Coordinator Jennifer Grace from Health and Human Services. No fiscal impact. My apologies.
I guess I'm next. You're next. Good morning. Rebecca Cooper, Loss Prevention Specialist for the County of Trinity. Every year, risk management recognizes an employee for their high level of safety and health awareness in day-to-day tasks and their participation in the loss prevention program. This year, I would like to recognize Jennifer Grace. Being a department safety representative, for almost two years, Jennifer has always portrayed her dedication to safety and her ambition to grow and make her work environment a truly safe place for all Health and Human Services employees. Her supervisors and peers have described her as strategic, futuristic, a creative thinker, focused, and very caring. She is actively involved in safety committee meetings, fire drills, ergonomic assessments, and facility inspections. She has a strong attention to detail and is a great asset as an extra pair of eyes for these loss prevention tasks. After reviewing the ergonomic policy, she implemented an ergonomic assessment tracking system for approximately 80 employees, ensuring that no one, no employee was going to be uncomfortable in her department, and to make sure that assessments were being conducted timely to prevent injury and to mitigate any cumulative trauma that could arise from repetitive motion. It is apparent that Jennifer is eager to learn and is open-minded. She continually promotes safety campaigns within the department, such as the No Mayo Potluck, a healthy eating campaign, and the Walk Like a Penguin campaign, a safe walking technique implemented by risk management to prevent slips and falls on ice. On behalf of risk management, we are fortunate to have Jennifer on our safety team, and look forward to many of her bright ideas and promotions to come in the near future. So that's with my great appreciation, to present the 2018 Annual Safety Award to Jennifer Grace. And if we could just get a picture with you, Julie?
Does she want a selfie? Correct. But I just really thank you for the recognition, and many of my key members are, you know, very enthusiastic and on board and supporting the safety efforts at Health and Human Services. I'm grateful for them. So thank you.
Congratulations. Got a smile. I'm going to pull it out. It's very.
Wow, that's very nice.
Great.
Thank you for your work and efforts and your great approaches.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're just going to be all over the agenda today. We'll move back up to 1.2. We see a presentation from Robert Nash and Ryan Richardson of Superior California Economic Development, otherwise known as SED, regarding SED Business Recovery Loan Fund and fiscal impact. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. Thank you for backing up on the agenda for us. It's my fault, I didn't allow near enough time to get through the traffic stops on Highway 299. A lot of work going on there. We're here today to talk about a fire recovery loan fund that we have available, and so I don't want to take up any more of your time with my presentation, I'll just go straight to Ryan Richardson. Ryan is our business development loan fund manager. He's been doing that for us for, how many years? 10 years?
13.
13 years. We've been having fun, we've already lost track of time. So Ryan, you want to come up and talk about your loan fund?
Good morning, Ryan Richardson. As Bob said, I'm the loan program manager for Superior California Economic Development. As you guys understand, it's been an interesting summer. At the beginning of summer, back in June, I went down to a trade organization, Cameo, where I remember they handle, it's a California Association for Economic Development for small, small businesses. And they had their annual meeting in Sacramento, and usually I pass on these kinds of things, but the very, the two first speakers were talking about disaster recovery. And I thought, you know what, we live in an area where there's always fires, where there's always something going on, so I'll go down for the morning session. I thought, you know, that'd be rather interesting to take it in, because every summer, I coach soccer, and every summer when we start, we have to delay because of fire, and we, you know, it's just something we do, and I thought, yeah, it's going to come up sooner than later. So I go through the meeting, and I met with Ben Stone, he's an economic developer out of Santa Rosa, who went through the Santa Rosa fire, also met with Leah Bate, she works for Women's Economic Ventures down in the Santa Barbara Ventura area, who had their own fire and subsequent mudslides. So I took copious amounts of notes, thinking, this is great, we, these are great things to do, and get back to the office, and we, you know, we have your normal workload, and it kind of sat there for a little bit. Then the car fire started, and it was rather interesting. It's, we live on the west side of town, so my wife, my son and I, and my daughter went up to the top of the hill, and we could see the fire, far away, it was still there, but the first time ever, we could see it going. My son goes, hey, do we have to be worried, is that going to be here? Nah, we're fine, son. Well, the next day, we're evacuated, and it came through Redding, and it was a rather traumatic experience, and it was very exciting for us. We got to pack everything up, we were evacuated for a couple of days, and during that time, I'm sitting there watching all of these firefighters from all over there coming through, first responders, a lot of people from Santa Barbara, from the Bay Area, San Bruno. It was fascinating, seeing all the people working, and it felt so useless sitting there in my house, or sitting there in my dad's place. So I started texting with one of my coworkers, said, hey, this is one of the things I learned about when we went to the disaster response, was getting cash to people as soon as possible, small business owners. Because once the impact is there, it's not only damage from the fire, which we didn't see very much in our area, but we saw more of an economic impact to businesses. So there's a short-term economic impact, which we created this for, and there's also an ongoing, as we'll see as we start to recover through the fire, of what's happening to a lot of these businesses. The tourism industry is going to be greatly affected. This has been a busy time of year for them. Many places have been closed for a month, if not longer, or the smoke came in, people canceled reservations. So we'll see that economic injury come out to play. So this first thing that we came up with was the Quick Response Business Loan Program. So the fire came through Redding Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, we were back to work, and we had this rolled out by Wednesday. So Bob was nice enough to say, okay, we can use some of these loan funds that we have developed, and we're going to target those to help the people. And it's, and there are no fees, so there's no origination fees on it, but it is a loan. It's up to $5,000, and you have two years to repay it. And the first two months, there are no payments, because we figured everyone's in a moment of distress, that's why they need the money. So we made it easy as possible. So the, the monthly payment is about $225, and that's, over the term of the loan, you'll pay about $363 in interest. So it's not real expensive money. We, we don't make any money off of it, we just want to have it out there. It's a 6% fixed rate, so again, something very easy for people to work with, and we got people cash in hand quickly. We had 17 inquiries at the very beginning, so we sent out 17 applications, four applic- sorry, six applications came back, four we funded immediately, two were newer businesses, they didn't have the financials, we referred them to the Small Business Development Center to get a little bit more information on them. And the very first loan was a Trinity County business. We got the application, 3 o'clock on Friday afternoon, by 5:30, we had them funded. So it was a short turnaround, so we knew how important it is to get the cash out there. That's what I have on my.
Well, I want to thank you for coming up, and the delays in the 299 shows you the impact of our community. And right before your presentation, there was a presentation by the chamber president, so definitely Trinity County is feeling the pinch in all parts of the county, not just where we are right now, but the whole county. So how are you making this information known to the businesses?
Good question. We've been working with Chelsea, she is a Public Information Officer with the Small Business Administration. She has been up talking about the SBA loan programs that are available for disaster recovery. She's also been talking about our loan programs. We've had press releases throughout up here, as well as the Redding area, and the contacts that I have on the loan program side, I deal with a lot of bankers. So all my bankers know about what we're doing. So that's my biggest referral. Lorie has been working more on the public side, or the, working with Rick, Dr. Puns, sending him information, working with different elected officials, so that's how we've been getting information out.
And is there still plenty of money to be loaned out?
We have about $80,000 that could be used for loans.
No, thank you Supervisor Chandler for bringing this item forward, and thank you both for bringing this to us today. It's important, I've had some calls from some businesses who are kind of feeling some wait, a cash drought, excuse me, due to the fire. You know, businesses have been cut off, so thank you very much, and we'll get the board out as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to compliment Ryan and Lorie for putting this program together very rapidly. And like Ryan said, that first Friday after the fire, we funded the first business in Trinity County, which is kind of exciting. You know, those guys were, it was that first weekend of the month, so they had payroll, loan payments. Everybody lost inventory, anybody that had fresh inventory, it was all gone. So it was a big deal, and the function lost, and we're locked out for almost two weeks, so we're expecting to hear more from other people. We, we're still in the regular business development loan business as well, so we're not limited to the recovery. But one of the things with the recovery loan that we have is, is people can get that upfront while they're going through an application process with SBA, which is a lot cheaper money in easier terms, and they can pay ours off and get that out of the way if they want to do that. So a lot of people have been using it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, Bob, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to.
I'm used to it. I was late, so I guess I own the spot.
Well, I just thought that maybe you could take 90 seconds and talk about the vacancies on the board, the two Trinity County vacancies.
Should I face the public when I do?
Yes, please.
So for all of you in attendance today, the Economic Development District and the Corporation, we have two entities with the same board members from each organization. We have two vacancies for private sector. Both of those would be appointed by the Board of Directors to the district, and then, and then the Corporation Board would appoint those individuals to the Corporation. And, and we're especially in need of some, some board member participation now, because we're getting ready to start our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy process, which is very public-oriented, and in particular, the new process designated by the U.S. Economic Development Administration requires a committee of stakeholders from the local community to be a part of that process, before we actually go out to the open public. And, and I think it would be good if we can get a couple of people to fill those two vacant seats, and, you know, maybe someone from the chamber would like to take one of those spots. It's, it's easy service, and we provide lunch at meetings.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for being so quick to respond, it's really appreciative.
We did better than on that than we did getting to the meeting today. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you, thank you again. I think I'm okay, I'm not going to choke, so. I think I'm okay, I'm not gonna choke, so if anybody else needs a break, we can keep moving now. Everyone good? Okay. Was that you?
Yeah.
All right, back to the consent agenda. I am pulling 2.3, that's the only other, that's the only item on the board. Any member from the public wanting to pull an item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
So moved as presented.
Okay. So you've got a chapter? Yes, Supervisor Brenner?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item 2.3, authorize the Chairman to sign a letter of support to interal Chief Victoria Christensen with the U.S. Forest Service Assistant Chief Leonard Jordan with NRCS regarding the Forest Service and the Natural Resource Conservation Service Joint Chiefs Landscape Restoration Partnership Proposal. No fiscal impact. So I am going to ask Pat Frost, who does facilitate our collaborative group, to just emphasize a few points of this proposal, so the board is well informed.
Okay, so Pat Frost, again, today I'm here representing the Collaboration Facilitation Team, and you'll recall that in 2015, we came before you with a similar kind of letter for a Joint Chiefs proposal that, that evolved out of the work of the Collaborative. That was a successful application, and brought in roughly $3 million over a three-year period for the U.S. Forest Service and the Natural Resource Conservation Service to implement projects primarily from the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the county-wide plan. That grant is coming to, to an, to an end, and we got a notice of solicitation in early August, that the Forest Service and NRCS, the chiefs, would be doing another similar kind of program this year. Collaborative met on the third Friday of August to discuss this, and resoundingly and unanimously approved submitting a proposed letter to you for support, to submit a new proposal with a slight shift in focus, and I think it not accidental that that shift in focus was timed with the car fire. So the proposal from 2015 had a primary landscape-scale kind of focus, working out in, in, you know, in the landscape. This proposal will focus on closer into the communities, kind of reemphasizing the importance of doing forestry work, fuels reduction work, closer in around the communities, this community wildfire protection, with an anchor, kind of the, the anchor project being the Weaverville Community Forest and, and the private lands around Weaverville Community Forest, and then secondarily, the Hayfork Community Protection Plan, and then on a lesser scale than the smaller communities that have primarily Forest Service land around them. One of the unfortunate things is, for example, over in Lewiston, most of the federal land, the publicly managed lands or BLM lands, they're not a part of this. So that's kind of the, I think, the approach that, that we're working on. We just met yesterday with Joe Smales, who's the Ranger here at the Trinity River Management Union, unit across the street, to kind of make sure that, you know, he and his team were still, you know, still focused on that, you know, on the Weaverville Community Protection side of things, and, you know, they're ready to rock and roll on it. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of what we're proposing. And it's, and there's, I think you probably also had a letter that looks pretty similar to the letter that you're, that I submitted for you, that was from the Trinity County Fire Safety Council, that has jumped on board to try to, you know, move this thing forward. The applications are due internally to the Forest Service and NRCS around the 21st of September, so timing, you know, is, is pretty critical to kind of get this thing pulled together.
Any questions from the board members? Pat, if I'm not mistaken, the, the story in the Journal a week ago, the first 48, that chunk of money from our last proposal was used through Six Rivers-
Yeah, so, so first 48 over in the Mad River Ranger District is an example of one of the kinds of projects that was, that benefited from that, that influx of dollars, you know, and, and I was thinking about this earlier, when I first came to Trinity County, to the RCD, I went to a Rotary Club meeting, and I was, you know, to give a talk about the RCD, and I didn't know the Rotary Club members, and I didn't know what, what am I gonna tell these, you know, business leaders about, you know, the RCD? And I said, you know, in a nutshell, what organizations like the Resource Conservation District at the time, the Natural Resources Division of your planning department, the Watershed Research and Training Center, you know, a big part of what we do is import money, you know, and, and put people to work in, in whatever capacity and way that we can, through contracts, or, or, you know, organizational staff, and, and that's what this is. I mean, this is money that otherwise wouldn't come to the U.S. Forest Service or NRCS to get work done in Trinity County. I mean, it, it's, you know, value-added.
Okay. Any other questions?
One, one just, just minor, minor edit maybe to your, your agenda items, so if you look at the letter, you'll see that the, the person from NRCS, Leonard Jordan, is the acting chief, and I think in your agenda item, on your agenda, it says Assistant Chief, so just to, you know, be clear, that it's an acting chief, not an assistant, the assistant chief. He may be an assistant chief, but right now, he's the acting chief. And, and the letter says Acting Chief.
Okay, we'll correct that in a little bit, thank you. All right, any other comments, questions for Pat, or members of the public? No?
I want to thank Kelly for coming also.
Oh, I didn't see Kelly. Kelly, thank you. Kelly's part of the facilitation team and keeps those meetings running. Thank you both, and, and your quick turnaround as well on this letter. Other than that, Karia?
I'll make a motion that we send the letter out.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, seeing none, so moved. Thank you again, Pat.
And thank you, and as the, the proposal gets refined and defined, and we actually have a list of projects that are in there, we'll report back to the board.
Great. Thank you both. Okay. Wow.
Yeah, wow.
Wow. Okay, so we're moving on to reports and announcements, reports from the Department Heads? And then I have County Council.
Good morning. Shawn Elson, HR Director. Just wanted to look forward that for 2019 calendar year, we will be having open enrollment in the calendar quarters, and open enrollment is going to be from September 10th to October 5th. And this will allow employees to make any changes to their medical plans, enroll or opt out during this time, and this will be effective for the 2019 calendar year. And then we're also posting for county employees on September 26th, a health fair, it's about four hours long, we'll be sending out the final announcement on that, and we're inviting employees to come to meet with the vendors, they have questions, they can certainly contact them throughout the summer period as well, but this is a great opportunity for basic measures.
Great. Any comments, questions, no? Thank you, Shawn. Any other, County Council?
I do a brief, a report on County Council's work. Every year, I do provide the board with some information regarding the code enforcement of cannabis related to what my office is doing. I provided, created a chart, which I have to Tina, I believe there's actually available for the public, and it goes through the cases that we receive from the Sheriff's Department, kind of some timelines in terms of where we are with each of them and what we're doing. Currently have, through the process, and we talked about in that presentation, we receive a report, and then there's a reinspection, of the reinspections that have been done, all but one is self-abated, the one that hasn't self-abated, and we're preparing to, if it didn't work, file when we can have the reinspection done. And then if you look on the chart, the areas in the dark are where we're waiting for the reinspections, but as of, this was printed out Friday, so this is pretty current information of what we've done this year.
So the ones in gray are kind of in a holding pen until the reinspections are done?
That's correct. So we have to do a reinspection to confirm it hasn't been self-abated before we proceed to the court to get permanent injunction of the state field, the goal. Again, the ones that have been re-inspected, of those, I believe nine have been re-inspected, and eight of the ones that re-inspected did self-abate, which is a very good process. And the one that hasn't, we're just waiting for a signature from code enforcement officers to proceed with filing the court.
And they, of course, who will do the re-inspections?
Correct, yeah, Sheriff's Department does the re-inspections, it's part of their, the MOU with the county.
All right. Any other board members?
We have 27 filed NOBs that you processed, correct?
There have been 27 provided to my office, yes.
How many, do you know how many of the CEPs have written?
I don't have that information. If it's gone criminal, that information wouldn't come through my office. All I have is what-
I don't care about criminal. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know how many of these are just would have been submitted to my office.
Okay.
As of Friday.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Director Tippett?
I was asked to provide some updates.
Yes.
Right now, going on with Canvas, as of yesterday, we have 363 applications for cannabis cultivation licenses. We have processed and issued 259, which is about 71% of what we received. Out of the 363, two have been withdrawn, two have been denied, so we're pretty much on course of getting through that. Also asked to provide a current status of the CEPs that we have issued to consultants. Fortunately, I didn't have that this last week, or last meeting, but I did provide it to you at this meeting, and also copy them back. We have eight applications that have been forwarded on to a consultant. Of the eight, one has been processed and approved, one is in circulation, which means the administrative draft has been written up, and we're going back and forth for comment, you know, we'll be out on the street pretty soon, or, and that's the precursor to action by the Planning Commission. And then we have five that are pending information, and that means that if there's something that we need on that study that we have not, that has not been provided to us, that doesn't allow us to do that. Right now, we're waiting on five, and I gave you dates of when we made the initial request for that information, and we have full look, pretty much monthly with those applicants, asking them for updates on where they're at. So it's, as you can see, there's several other people saying, where am I at? And it's, it's the really rest of the fact that applicant to get us this information, so that we can finish up, and we haven't asked for quite a few since April. And then finally, there's one that has withdrawn the application, so that's where we stand. I was also asked to provide a, I'll make sure I, a, a CUP fund distribution as far as how the funds should be distributed within the applications for CUPs, you know, how much went to consultants, how much went to staff. Right now, I don't have enough data points, I only have one that's a complete application, so I kind of have to reserve and ask for that, until maybe, and maybe have a couple more that have been processed, so I'll get a better idea of what's, what's going on with that. So with that, if you have any questions?
So we should be seeing these CUPs roll out as soon as possible, once those docs arrive to the PC.
Yeah, I need to, I need to get, I can't, I'm dead in the water until I get this information. I can't answer people's thing.
Oh, I, I'm just generally speaking.
So that's, that's the biggest thing that's going on, and I, I try to work, we do get calls to try to coordinate with consultants and not just, I spent, like, the last week, I've spent, made a couple attempts to get a little, but we are trying to get them to get the information to us, so that we can get it wrapped up. It's, it's both to the applicant and to staff, the heads out of our hair, as I say, and down the road, so that's where we can get, that's where I'm getting up to.
Okay, very appreciated. We were looking for an update on SHN. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, any other Department head safety reps? Appreciate it. Report from County Administrative Officer.
Director Tippett stole my thunder, I was gonna report that, so I'm just gonna say good job, and I got some other reports, and then we get down the line here.
Okay. Members of the board supervisors, Supervisor Chatter?
So one of the board time-ons is the CAP, it's a three-county, Colusa, Glen, and Trinity County Collaborative, and it has to do with our lie-keep and our vouchers for wood and Head Start, or, excuse me, Mills and Wells, we had Head Start, and sure, we have, we don't. So it's beginning to branch off, and I've explained that we, we're also, just like the Chamber is doing a nonprofit, we're in that process as well. It used to be staffed through the Glen County HHS, and now we actually have taken it and made it isolated, and there is beginning of some grants that we're looking into pretty seriously, and with that, I have requested the Trinity County representatives, there's, there's quite a few of us, as you already know, on the CAP, different people within the behavioral health and people of the public, that we start meeting, the Trinity County part, start to meet regularly. I'm looking to have a CAP representative come in February or March and do a presentation. By that time, I think the division will be, and perhaps we'll know where the funding will be out with the continuum of care and affordable housing, so there's, there's some very promising things, and so I was really excited. Everyone on the Trinity CAP does want to start meeting as a Trinity stand-alone in order to be more on the same page, so that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Brenner?
Yep. Two out of County Travel, NorTech on the 23rd down to Chico, and CalVHBC for training, and we were supposed to have three other advisory board members from our Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Two weren't able to show up, probably related to fire problems, but we did have another board member show up, which was very nice, and that was in Redding, CalVHBC.
Sure, Supervisor Brenner?
No, out of County Travel. I, I'm delighted, I do want to thank Director Tippett for trying to open up Highway 299. I think we mentioned it last meeting, as quick as possible after the fire, he twisted a lot of arms to get the 299 open, so thank you, Director Tippett. And lastly, I just also wanted to say, during the Chamber presentation, I didn't mean just to highlight the two lakes, of course, there's the whole 299 corridor and river, not to affect your district supervisor minds, or the historic district of Weaverville or Hayfork, so I don't want to be accused of-
Very.
You would never, you know. Okay, California State Cannabis Legislation Committee, that's you and I.
Oh, I have nothing to report.
I have one.
Okay.
I don't think it's been signed yet, there's stuff, as we've been saying, moving through the legislation process. We heard last week at our meeting that there's a possibility, of course, everyone's under the impression of permanent licensing, January 1st, there's a bill moving forward to help kind of maybe delay that at the state level, because they realize local jurisdictions, particularly counties, are still doing a lot of work in environmental review, and they think they're gonna need a little bit more time. environmental review, and they think they're gonna need a little bit more time to extend our permanent licensing. It has not been signed, to my knowledge, so it may not be, and that we're still maybe stuck with January first. That's the only real permanent, important update that I have on legislation. Okay, permanent commercial cannabis ordinance, you'll see on the agenda. We have just two amendments to cultivation for now. We are still working on the overall cleanup on cultivation, but we thought these two were timely, non-land use, and could come to the board as quick as possible. And then, of course, we will continue with the cleanup. You'll see some stuff peel off and go to the PC before it comes to the board that's land use related. And then eventually, we will, once that's done, start tackling, as I mentioned before, retail. New jail and detention facility committee.
Nothing needed to report since last board meeting.
Okay. The two thousand and five C O P refi?
Yes, the committee has come to agreement on the organization to assist the county, and will make its presentation on September eighteenth. And for clarification.
September eighteenth, you say?
September eighteenth, yeah.
Budget development?
We're still ready for next week's budget variance.
Okay, so it starts next Tuesday through Thursday and theory.
Correct.
It could be done in a day. Wilderness oversight?
I keep my mouth shut.
Really?
Yeah. I don't know how, but, but yeah, I do. I have nothing to report out on.
All right.
I'd like to request, I'd like to request that board look at having those public workshops. We talked about that, but we haven't set up a calendar, and I know that you were gonna look into a couple different places. So I just would like, I don't know if it's a request to put it on the agenda, or just a side note under your report out, but I'd really like to see those workshops get scheduled.
We have requested the ad hoc, their ad hoc, a willingness to come up with suggestions. I anticipate that from last meeting. Okay, so we have an addendum, do we not? Have I missed anything? This is too short of an agenda, I'm not used to it. Okay. For the addendum, we're gonna move the human resource two items up. So B and C, we will start. Addendum B, approve a twelve-month master memorandum of understanding with the Trinity County Skills Trade Unit, subject to routing as to form of content, no impact to general fund, approximately thirty-three thousand four hundred and seven dollars to, for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, from other funding sources. Good morning.
Really great, thank you. So the most recent bargaining agreement with the skill trades unit had expired on June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and the county was in negotiations with them since May of two thousand and eighteen. Over the course of a few negotiating sessions, an agreement and concept was made and we presented to the board supervisors in closed session on August twenty-first. Board accepted the agreement and directed to negotiate a decree and M O U, which we presented to the skill trades unit and then approved it. And we're presenting it to you for approval today. I just renewed major provisions. The term is for one year, so it begins on June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, I'm sorry, July first of eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Under compensation and benefits, their salary would be increased by two percent, and they did ask for additional clause, that if any of the other bargaining units received a two percent, something more than two percent in salary increases on that effective date, they would want that difference. And then under general provisions, over this year term, we're gonna be meeting with all the bargaining units to discuss medical insurance and working on the class of compensation, get that fully implemented. And we'll be meeting probably monthly, a couple hours a month, with all the bargaining units. We're having two, three memorandums from each of them. Both of our schools. Yeah, there's the end. Board members, questions? Questions for the public, comments? Okay, so I have a question. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Correct, so moved. Item C, approve the modified job description and setting the salary range of D zero sixty to the Director of Behavioral Health Services classification. Modify the Behavioral Health Service Department allocation list to reflect the D O sixty salary range effective September fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and direct that said change be made to the allocation listing. Approximate cost and salary benefits per month for the Director of Behavioral Health Services at A Step is fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Okay, so our current Director of Behavioral Health has actually been a part-time contracted position since two thousand and nine. He has announced his resignation, which would be effective November sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, unless we've approved it somebody earlier than that. Due to the Department of Healthcare compliance requirements for both the mental health and alcohol and other drug programs, there exists a need for an actual full-time director. So in preparation for recruitment, I wanted to bring to you to have a new salary range approved, since we have not had one set since almost ten years ago. And then we did need to revise the job description so that it would more accurately align with the duties and responsibilities of the position. The suggested salary range of D O six zero is based on a comparison my department conducted. We contacted all the counties, the same counties that we used in the class of compensation study, and we feel that it would compensate for responsibilities and attract local licensing fees. And I just wanted to reiterate on the allocation list that you had approved, they already had a one F T P full-time equivalent, so there's no change to the allocation listing.
Okay. Comments, questions, board members? Members of the public, any questions or comments? Okay, seen that, I'll bring it back to the board.
Move to approve amendment C as presented.
All right. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you, Sheldon. Okay, so addendum A, introduce a waiver reading of an ordinance which amends section forty-three of Trinity County zoning ordinance number three fifteen regarding commercial cannabis cultivation regulations, unknown assault impact. Yes. Supervisor minds?
Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, this is the ad hoc, worked last week on two of these items to bring forward. As you recall, one of our meetings, we were looking at the self-transport item, which is allowed under the state of California under cultivation. I know staff has worked on this, County Council, and there was a, certainly, a request from the industry, as we don't have a distributor here in the county, the need to help move their product legally with this license nestled under transportation. So you'll see the particulars of this element of self-transport. We are proposing, the ad hoc, that there's no extra cost for a cultivator, if they're already licensed with us, they just have to come in and indicate that they too would like to have this added to their license. We are requesting, they have ninety days to obtain from the state license permitting the self-transport portion from the state of California. As I mentioned, there's no extra fees. The other item to this is, there's no extra fees to this portion for the self-transport license. The other item that we added to it as an amendment to cultivation is the renewal license. Finally, it's on here, the renewal license. If you recall, we were stuck with March first, I believe. Now we've added this, so it is, the fees are happening in the new year license. So it's gonna be sporadic throughout the year, depending on when your license has been issued. Margaret, did I miss anything on the legal side of the self-transport item?
No, I do also another, is an additional change to two H. When it was originally written, the state wasn't issuing the licenses they are now. So we modified the language just to make it clear that it's not just applying for the state license, you also have to obtain the state license, since it's now being issued.
Oh, that's right.
Has, has that been modified in this document?
Yes, it's under two H.
I just wanted to say, right now, we're asking for notification would be an email or writing to the department, respond accordingly to the processing. But I just wasn't really spelled out for the public. I just want to give the course that we're asking for.
Great, and I've asked Margaret, maybe the two of you can work together, on just a quick, simple form that makes it easy. You don't need eight pages.
It's, it's just gonna be something that they sign, acknowledging the responsibilities of what, what's required under the program, which is just, you know, licensing with the state and different things like that. But it's just an acknowledgement that we understand that they're presuming that they can continue.
So will the license holder also get some type of documentation that they have this added to the license?
Yeah, once, once they sign that document, we'll just issue an addendum to the license.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Anything else? No? Okay, board members?
I just, yeah, I have a question. The revolving anniversary date for cultivation, this will be at the same time as, as that? Is that, I just, because they're, they're signing up now, but they're gonna be using their cultivation license?
Yeah, it rides with the cultivation license.
Yes, okay.
It's like an, it's a rider on existing licenses.
Okay, so they'd be reapplying for this license at the time they reapply for the cultivation license?
Yeah, the next, the future applications will just be a box that they, they check.
Okay. And where, where that change takes the anniversary?
Would be-
That starts now, which is-
Yeah, it starts now, but, you know, most licenses by default right now expire in March, so that will expire in March, and then when they renew, it will renew with that license. So whatever those license dates are, that, this will line up those dates.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to get clarity on. So the cultivators that have license right now, we are now going to put them on a anniversary date and not that hard date today, so.
Well, yeah, it, no, it won't be effective today. The license, the licensees that are licensed now will still expire on March thirty-first, but that licensee waits until June to apply, then his new expiration date will be June, once they apply for that license. If they choose to apply in January, that license will line up with the date of when the license is issued. So if they apply in December, the next year, the following year's license will be due in December.
Okay. That was all. Does that make sense?
Yes. We still have a hard deadline of March, but it's up to the individual cultivator that if he decides to sign up on a, on a, earlier or later, then his anniversary of date would be in compliance with that.
Yeah, but it's, it's also very important to stress that you have to be licensed in order to be cultivating. So if you, your license will expire right now, most cultivators' license will expire in March. If you wait till June, you cannot initiate cultivation until June.
And then we know some are expiring, November and December of this year. There's a, some have been issued, so-
Oh, okay.
So, Rick, some, some license holders were issued a license in November, December of last year. So technically, we're saying, and Margaret, correct me if I'm wrong, they could renew up until March, but could renew with their renewal date of December if that was the case.
So it's annually based on the date of issuance of the license? So that their license is good for that period of time? They can apply prior to that, which would be the best recommended course of action, so there's no gap. But there is, correct, likely are gonna be some that are not exactly the March first date, based on the issue and it's not the date of application.
Right. And, and that, of course, that, that was something that's been needed a while, and this was an opportunity to put this in quickly, so.
Okay, any other questions on Margaret and Rick? Comments, questions of public?
I, I do have one question, sorry. So if we were to apply early now, then our next year has to be renewed on that date. That kind of sounds like we might not want to do it too early. If, if we did it back into, you know, in December, and it's not due till March, now the following year, we're gonna have to do it in December. And that sounds a little crazy to me, just to keep backing it up. Every time we do it now, it's only good until the next time we renew, so we get, you know, the further ahead we get, that's kind of penalizing. We now have to do it that much earlier the year before, next year, yeah.
Perhaps if you, if you choose a date and renew only on that date every year, and you take that responsibility instead of letting it lapse, that, that would, you could renew on, on March first every year, if that makes you happy.
February first?
February first, November, whatever. Some people aren't happy with that, and they get hit and they start growing and they forget about it. So we would like you to take that responsibility. Thank you.
Good morning, Deana Brower. I'm really excited about some of these changes. Thank you.
Yeah, me too, but more coming.
I'm, I'm very excited about these changes, so, thank you. But, but I, I did still kind of want a little clarification. Everyone right now, the bulk expires March thirty-first. They still expire March thirty-first, correct? And then if, whatever their license issue date is next year, that will be good for one year? Or that will still expire March thirty-first, I guess?
We are trying to adapt to the renewal of the issuance of the license, so.
So this just changes the due date of the renewal application?
Right.
It does not change the period for which a license is good.
Right. Okay, is that all? No, I don't want to get confused.
Actually, I'm not sure about that. I assume that we'll be doing it when we issue a license, the date it's issued will be good for one year from that date, to me. But I, I love to the-
Well, I, I really also recommend that people don't wait till the day their license expires, but really, if you had a due date, it could be, if you had an existing license, the due date could be at least a month, two weeks prior to, for processing. Because you're not, it's not gonna be a situation where you walk in, walk out with license on the same day.
Right.
But still, you, you, upon the effective date of this ordinance, any licenses that we issue that are after will be for one year.
Will be for one year?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so if someone, like, she pointed out, walk of our due March thirty-first, someone might want a little bit earlier due date, a due date of February first. You could come in, renew it, since you're, you know, a couple-year license holder, I want a due date of February first, and that's your new date.
For everybody, I say I got a license issued July first. I still expire March thirty-first.
Currently, well-
I see where you're saying.
Yeah, everybody, everybody right now, up until thirty days from now, we issue a license that expires on March thirty-first. Upon, upon the initiation of this ordinance, then I'll, we will switch over to that, that time period. And also, keep in mind, if you, let's say you do apply in January, you can have the option to request issuance of license on, on a date of your current license expiring, and you're just ahead of it.
Okay.
But what, what my point was earlier is, is if you're cultivating, do not let your license expire, and you are exposed.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Really, how, is how these people want to handle their licensing. Perhaps if they think about it like their driving license, their privilege to drive, we can't handle it like the DMV does so efficiently as to going in on that date and having it for me. But please, this is giving you the opportunity to renew and use it as you want to. You're gonna be responsible for this, and you have to have a license and have it in place in order to grow.
Good morning, and thank you for, especially to ad hoc and- and all the staff for engaging in such a timely fashion on this important issue. A couple things to add is, I think we need to add something. So we've got three application requirements, and then fees. And the fees is where it says, under nine fees, Section D, fees shall be paid in thereafter annually on date of issuance of the license each year. But we also need to define that the duration of the license is good for one year from date of issuance. Otherwise, we still have, and we need to remove, the existing March 31st date from the existing ordinance. Otherwise, this thing gets real messy. And I think it's an awesome idea and a very good fit to be able to have a cultivation applicant merely check a box if they would also like to participate in self-transport. But the way this is written, it offers county permission for self-transport. But the self-transport state license type is a bureau license, not a CDFA license. And the way I understand it, if you're, the county can't really offer permission for something, but they can offer a permit for something. If they offer permission, it could be viewed as granting a special privilege. But, so perhaps it's a $1 fee for a self, a distribution self-transport. And the conditions, one of the conditions or requirements for that is a cultivation license. Because it's confusing to mix different license types from different agencies. And the self-distribution is not a CDFA license type yet. It's being talked about in SAC, and there's urgent need for it. But presently, it's only available under, is one of the distribution types by the Bureau, not by CalCan.
Just stating the state of California covers us, isn't it?
I believe what we're doing is appropriate and can be done. To be clear, that it's not as if this license is being offered for free. It is being rolled into the cultivation license incorporated with the cultivation license. And it's my understanding that the state of California will accept this as the county's permission, and then they can proceed forward as they seem appropriate. I do agree that likely, this will become more formalized from the state level going forward. And what this does is it sets us up to not have to amend it again as the state prepares and kind of finalizes what they're going to do. But I do appreciate what you're saying.
And the removal of the existing due dates from the cultivation ordinance, they're in there in ink. Do we have to remove those and then provide language that makes the license good for one year from date of issuance?
At least nine do that.
This nine does that.
That removes that section and rewrite to this written.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say they were removing it.
It says amends, so what amends means is this is the new language that will take that place in its entirety.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Good morning, Board, Adrian Keyes-Mayfork. I just really want to say thanks for taking this one seriously. It's a pretty big issue for everybody in the county, probably one of the biggest ones we're facing right now. So thanks for giving us the ability to move forward, because we still have a lot of ground to cover. It'd be permitted by the state, not going to buy a car or something, I guess. So I'll figure out what to do next. But now, at least I know I can go do it. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
And I would just recommend everybody let the planning department know that if you intend to do this, you have to let them know. So it doesn't automatically happen.
All right, any other comments, questions from? Okay, seen that? So great, thank you, Supervisor Chadwick.
I have one quick name.
Hold on, I have a motion pending.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
I just have something I, it came to everyone, I noticed. On the FCSAP, date of issuance, there is work that goes into issuance. So I would recommend maybe to, or consider date of application when we have date of issuance, so that we're sure we recover any cost that might be associated with that renewal.
I would, maybe that's something we'll look at that, at ad hoc, but I prefer at the moment, issuance.
And I believe that's something that maybe will be dealt with when looking at application fees as well.
Right.
Excuse me, I'm prepared to make a subsequent. If this is not ready to move on, perhaps it needs to be sent back to staff for another two weeks or month or whatever for revaluation?
Due to, for what?
Public comment?
No.
Oh, you have a motion pending.
Yeah, you have a motion pending, looking for a second.
Yeah, are you going to, just second to her motion?
I already did.
Yeah, so.
No, he hasn't, he's on his second.
I have a subsequent.
All right, are you going to?
The motion fails for life for a second.
Thank you, thank you.
I thought he said he seconded.
He did, and then he did second.
Okay, I, sorry, my apologies.
That's okay.
All right. So I have a motion and a second.
On Bob's motion, right, and I made a subsequent, and it failed.
Okay. But anyway.
So I call for the question.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No. I mean.
We do need to roll call. I didn't mean that. We do need to roll call, because I didn't know.
Oh, that roll call, see?
I'm just.
It's not. Supervisor, please.
Yes.
Throw me, Supervisor Brower.
Yes.
Supervisor Moore, thank you, yes. All right, thank you, everyone, board members, thank you.
Pass.
You too. Thanks for throwing me out.
Terry in the room now.
All right, no quick session?
Oh, you can go recording now?
We are adjourned, thank you.